Good evening, everyone. This is the Select Board. Monday, October 25, 2021. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you, everyone. This evening, we have several items on our agenda. We'd like to start with a quick discussion of Article VII and then move on to Item 5 and then come back to the other town meeting articles if that's agreeable to everyone. Article VII is an appropriation of monies from the Capital Stabilization Fund to the General Fund. And based on some discussions at the end of last week, the request would be that this board vote to ask that the article be returned to us for further study. It's an article that we submitted. It relates to the fire station building project. And there's a, the intent was not for the General Fund to be where the funds would be transferred to, but to a special purpose stabilization fund. So that would, the Town Council, the Town Moderator have indicated they think that an amendment to change General Funds to Special Purpose Stabilization Fund would be beyond the scope of the article. So we'd like to have a discussion at this meeting and then let the Warrant Committee know, because they're meeting at 7:00, whether we're going to ask that this article be sent back to us for further study. So does anyone have any questions about Article VII? Okay, seeing and hearing none, do we have a motion then to recommend that this article be returned to the Select Board for further study?
I just got a text. He's looking for the Zoom one to speak to the article.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wells, I missed the beginning of what you said. Okay, I'm sorry. I had trouble hearing what was said. Mr. Dennehy, did you hear it by the ear?
Mr. Clark would like to speak.
I think Mr. Clark would like to speak to the article if he could, but he needs the link to get in, and I just sent it.
I just sent it to Mr. Clark.
Maybe Matt might want to hold off on that from back.
He's going to speak with us about it or at a town meeting? Okay. Okay, then while that's happening, why don't we go to, if there's no objection, why don't we go to Item 5, which is the Town Voting Precincts. And we're going to be joined by our Town Clerk, Susan Galvin, and Jay Fundling, who's a member of the Redistricting Committee. So Ms. Galvin will turn it over to you.
Good evening. Thanks. Thanks for having us. I'm Susan Galvin. I'm a town clerk. And I have Mr. Fundling here with me, who is a member of the Redistricting Committee. I did send you a presentation, and I know you're got a jam-packed meeting, so we're going to keep it brief. And we're going to jump right into what our proposal is. The Redistricting Committee and myself was comprised of a member from each one of the 10 precincts. We met on Thursday. Mr. Fundling contributed a great deal of his expertise and knowledge and helped come up with a great precinct plan, as did the rest of the members. So we're going to move on to that. So basically, our proposal says that we're going to affect five precincts. They are 3, 5, 6, 7, and 10. Basically, what we're suggesting is that precincts 3 and 6, that we move the block at High Street out of Precinct 3 into Precinct 6. At Precinct 6 and 7, we're going to make the Southeast Expressway the boundary and move Guilford Road from Precinct 6 to Precinct 7. I'm going to let Mr. Fundling take over and talk about 5, 10, and 1.
Okay. And I know, we are both being brief tonight because we know that you have a lot to get through in one hour. I don't want to shortchange you in what we're telling you about the changes, so we'll go over them briefly. If you have more questions, please ask.
Let me just say, Ms. Galvin and Mr. Fundling, please take what time you need. We have the appointments on our agenda tonight, but we've also posted them on our Wednesday agenda, so we can defer those if need be.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Okay. So, yeah, what Ms. Galvin said, if I can back up a little bit, just to put this out there. When we looked at the current precinct boundaries and the maximum and minimum in each precinct, as determined by the state, Precinct 3 was too large by six people. Precinct 7 was too small by 22 people, and Precinct 10 was too small by 61 people. So those three precincts had to change. And then, of course, if you want to move, increase or decrease a precinct, you've got to take it or give it from somewhere else. So other precincts are going to have to move. So as she said, for Precinct 7, we moved the area of Guilford Road, which was the only area east of 93 that wasn't in Precinct 7. So now we took that from Precinct 6, Precinct 7, makes the boundary a lot more natural and makes the numbers work out, too. And for Precinct 3 and Precinct 6, we took, when she says the block on High Street, that's the small block right across the street from the Milton T-Station. I believe, according to census, it has seven residents living there. So we only moved seven residents out of Precinct 3 and into Precinct 6 for that. One of the committee's goals was to change as few people's precincts as possible. Just because every person you change, that's an inconvenience to one more vote. So. And then the third one, which she deferred to me, was a little bit more complicated of a move. And I will say that we started off with suggestions from the state of Massachusetts and then modified them to, you know, to fit what we thought made sense locally. So Precinct 10 did not have enough people. So there is an area along the border with Boston, sort of on the west side of Precinct 10, between Cushing Road and Fairmont House, which was part of Precinct 5. The state suggested moving that Precinct 10, so we did. We agree with that statement. But in both cases, whether in the state's plan and our plan, when you move that from Precinct 5, Precinct 10, Precinct 5 is too small. So the state's suggestion was, oh, to make Precinct 5 bigger, take a chunk out of Precinct 1. Well, the committee felt very strongly that you don't need to change Precinct 1 at all. So if you don't need to, don't. So the biggest change we made was instead of changing Precinct 1, Precinct 1 is going to stay completely intact. And we're going to make Precinct 5 bigger by, you know, we're going to take that sort of large chunk with 100 and something people, 165 people, move that into Precinct 10. But then that's too many to move, so we're going to take two small blocks. The triangle block where the Athensan firehouse is, so right around there, and then another block off of Brushhill Road that is near the intersection of Cushing and Brushhill. And it's a small, I believe it's four houses, and they're bounded on every side by Curry College. So that is a block, according to the census. We move that into precincts from Precinct 10 to Precinct 5. And then Precinct 5 and Precinct 10 have the right number of people, and Precinct 1 is untouched, which the committee was very happy about. So. Again, that was a quick overview of the changes we made. I'm happy to, happy to discuss that further, but the end result is five precincts are changing their boundaries, which the committee was happy to, at least that's improvement from the state's suggestion, which had six precincts changing their boundaries. And I had a number here, I believe, 276 residents are going to move from one precinct to another. So hopefully that wasn't too rushed, but was brief. I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Galvin and Mr. Fundling. Does any member of the board have a question or a comment? Okay, hearing none, then we have this on our agenda on Wednesday evening for a vote. Thank you for presenting this. This gives us some time to take a look at it over the next couple of days. We have some materials from you that are helpful, and we can go through them over the next couple of days. Everyone can take a look at the changes and come back and bring this back to our agenda on Wednesday evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so back to Item 3, which is the town meeting articles. Do we have Mr. Clark with us now? I see a telephone number. Okay, why don't we wait a little bit longer? The idea was to try to get our position to the Warrant Committee for their 7:00 meeting, but we have a little time. We have some appointments, but as I said, we've moved the appointments to Wednesday's agenda as well. Item 6, I think we should take up next, if that's agreeable to everyone. That's the Central Avenue and Cape Town Street MBTA Railroad Signs and Infrastructure. I believe the town administrator and/or Town Council, Kevin Fryte, is going to give us an update on that.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. I can start, so. Just to be very brief, we had a wonderful working relationship with the MBTA. What's happened recently is they did some work to the crossings, their high-speed trolley line crossings at Cape Town Street and Central Avenue, and at that time, there was the discussion about potentially updating the railroad crossing signs. There had previously been some static signs that many people have grown up seeing on a monopoly board where it says railroad crossings. They have asked us to possibly entertain flashing crossing signs that would be started when the approaching trolley reached each of those crossings. State law requires the trolley to stop at those intersections. That process was nearly complete, and we learned that it wasn't able to be accomplished with the flashing crossing signs. They're the solar-powered ones with the vehicles, the trolleys initiating those. So the T went out and spent money. They installed four signs, two on Central Avenue and two on Cape Town Street. One of the signs on Central Avenue is, obviously, Central Avenue has been under construction. The bridge has been under construction, so that was placed on a Boston pole. As you head north across Central Avenue, that was placed on a town of Milton pole. And then when you get up to Cape Town Street, they actually built an infrastructure with conduit and electrical wire as you head north, and then affixed the other pole as you head south on Cape Town Street to assign. They have subsequently asked the town to adopt those signs and also maintain those signs. We, after long discussions with the T and with Town Council and Chase Berkeley from DPW, we don't have the wherewithal to maintain those signs. We don't mind, and we express this wholeheartedly, if it's just replacing a battery. The town has invested in solar-powered stop signs and solar-powered pedestrian crossing signs. We would have no problem maintaining those signs, should they be just for regular maintenance, and those batteries have a lifespan of anywhere from 10 to 15 years as the technology works its way forward. But there was a sizable investment made on Cape Town Street to that infrastructure. Should that sign come down, the town would not be, and we relayed this to the T, able to maintain that. So unfortunately, it was a little bit of an all-or-nothing deal where we would have to adopt the signs and then agree to maintain them going forward. There is no other municipality in the state that does that. These are the first of those signs. They are attractive, and anything we can implement to make any of those crossings safer, we appreciate. It's just the financial obligation to maintain those signs, should they come down with driver error or any type of unforeseen event that, you know, basically made us rethink signing a contract with the T to adopt these signs. I'll turn it over to Town Council if I missed anything.
The Office of Town Council, I don't have anything to add to the Downing and Stewart's report on this matter.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dennehy and Mr. Fryte. Does any member of the board have a question or a comment? So, Mr. Dennehy, do we need to take any action on this item this evening? I guess it's only on for a discussion, but are you looking for the board's thoughts on this financial issue in maintaining these signs in the infrastructure?
Yes, I'm not sure if all of you have seen them. You probably haven't seen the infrastructure that was built on Cape Town Street. The ones on Central Avenue are more noticeable. It's obviously a larger thoroughfare. But, yeah, I would love your thoughts on this and understand that. I don't know the exact investment that was made. We pay about $1,500 for the signs that we deploy throughout the town, the flashing stop signs and the flashing pedestrian signs. So at a minimum, you're talking $6,000. But again, on the north side of Cape Town Street, or in the north direction of Cape Town Street, there's infrastructure that they installed that could estimate it to be worth about $30,000. So it's a pretty sizable investment to pick up for these signs, which are not mandated statutorily. They're not, they don't have to be there. Because again, as I said, the trolleys statutorily have to stop at the cross in each direction. So just looking for a little input from the board, it would be a sizable investment going forward should anything happen to these signs. And again, it's not like we have a supply of them. This is something that we haven't entertained as a town.
Okay, thank you. Does any member of the board, yes, Mr. Wells? You're on mute, Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My only concern is, so none of this came from a resident. None of this was driven by the concern of a resident at all?
Correct. No, if you recall, there were some stop signs that were placed. They were up the approval of the Traffic Commission along Central Avenue. That led to a discussion during the construction of the reconstruction of the crossings that they suggested we could possibly enhance the signage down there with some flashing stop signs. At no time during those discussions did we understand that we would adopt and maintain those going forward.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wells. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? And we're getting background noise, so if everyone could mute while they're not speaking, it will help eliminate the background noise. Thank you. Any other member of the board? All right, well, hearing none, what we could do is, this topic having been introduced this evening, we could put this on the November 10 agenda for a follow-up discussion. We do not have it on Wednesday's agenda, so we could put this on for the 10th of November for members to weigh in at that time and possibly take action. I believe the MBTA is waiting for a response from us, and I'm guessing that that timeframe would probably work for the MBTA. Is that correct, Mr. Dennehy?
That's correct.
All right, thank you. Okay, why don't we go back to Item 3? I don't see Mr. Clark unless he's on the telephone ending in 703. But that was related to Article 7. Are there any other articles that members of the board would like to discuss this evening prior to the town meeting? Often, we vote a position on many of the articles, and I think we've largely done that on these articles, but are there any articles that any members of the board would wish to speak to?
Madam Chair, I believe we have voted to support Article 3, but if we haven't, if we haven't, I would ask that we consider voting in support of Article 3, which is the appropriation of monies from the Peg Access and Cave Road. And I have circulated a PowerPoint, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I don't know that we need to go through the whole PowerPoint right now because we will at sound meeting, but be happy to answer any questions on that. But if we haven't voted that, I'd at least like that to be considered.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion. I'll second that. Was that me? Was that mine? Was that my echo?
So, Mr. Wells, you're making the motion.
To approve Article 3.
Okay, the motion to support the recommendation under Article 3 is made and seconded any discussion. Hearing none, then we'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Are there any other articles that anyone would like to address prior to the town meeting?
Madam Chair? Were we taking a vote to support Article 1?
I'm not sure. It probably wouldn't hurt to go through them and just vote each one of them, since we've done that now with Article 3.
So if it'd be all right with you, Madam Chair, I'd make a motion authorize to support Article 1, as submitted by the Select Board.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? I think the motion is technically to support the recommendation of the Warrant Committee.
I'll accept that.
Then all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Why don't we vote on the recommendation on Article 2, which is a technical correction to the stormwater bylaw?
I'll make a motion to support Article 2, which is a amendment to the general bylaws regarding stormwater management.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Why don't we entertain a motion to support the recommendation of the Warrant Committee under Article 4?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. I'll entertain a motion to support the recommendation of the Warrant Committee under Article 5.
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Article 6 is the unpaid bills article. This will require a 9/10 vote at town meeting. Do we have a motion to support the recommendation of the Warrant Committee?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, Article 7, do we have Mr. Clark?
No, so that was a town meeting, Madam Chair, or I'll say.
I'm sorry?
He was looking for the link for town meeting, the nine-hour meeting.
Oh, okay, so can we take a vote then on Article 7? I think the motion would be to refer, to request that the article be returned to the Select Board for further study.
You just made it.
Okay, all in favor? Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, for our viewers, I'm sorry for the background noise. This is a little difficult in this room. Mr. Dennehy, if you would be so kind as to let the Warrant Committee know what we've just voted on Article 7, that would help their meeting.
Certainly.
Okay, we have just about a half, almost a half hour left. We have a series of appointments. We also have follow-up discussion on the runway for our flight paths. My understanding is that in Item 8, the gazebo permit application has been withdrawn, so we don't need to act on that one. Does the board wish to take up the committee assignments on the runway for our flight paths next? Any preference?
I'll do the committees, Madam Chair, just to get it down, and then with any time, we can spend it on the discussion, so. I'll make a motion to, is this a reappointment or appointment of Wendy?
Reappointment.
Reappointment.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Wendy Gapo to the Conservation Commission. I just don't see in my agenda what that, is there a?
It's a three-year term. Okay, all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Shade Tree Advisory Committee.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to appoint the following members to the Shade Tree Advisory Committee: Branch B Lane, Fred Taylor, Nancy Chisholm, Carol Stocker, Laura Beebe, and Christina Paxia.
Any discussion? All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Trustees of the Affordable Housing Trust.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to appoint Thomas Callahan, Julie D. Kramer, Philip Murphy, Frank Davis, to the trustees of the Affordable Housing Trust for a term of one year.
All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells? And myself, yes. The Select Board's Landing Committee.
Madam Chair, I'll move to the following appointments. The Select Board Landing Committee, Richard Burke, Theodore Carroll, Timothy Suinski, Michael Dennehy, Allison Quinn, Richard Wells, and Bill Ritchie.
Second.
I believe that's for a term of one year. All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Oh, second.
Okay, and myself, yes. And finally, the Milton Cultural Council. We have, these are new candidates. These are not reappointments. These would be new appointments.
Madam Chair, I'll move to appoint the following members to the Milton Cultural Council: Amory Files, Regine Jean Charles, Stephanie Truesdale, and Kathleen Potter.
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus? Ms. Collins?
Yeah.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, we've just been notified that the Zoom is going to be needed for town meetings, so the earlier we can wrap up our meeting, then the earlier the town meeting can get set up with the folks in the next room, with the moderator and the others. We have on our agenda a follow-up on runway for our flight paths. If we think that's something that we could address fairly quickly, I think we have time to do that, and we'll defer the meeting minutes of October 13. They're also on our agenda Wednesday evening. Would the board like to take that agenda item up? I have 7:06 as the time.
Madam Chair, I'm unsure about how quickly that can be tied up, so I'll defer to others to judge when they've done that.
Mr. Zulus?
If I may, Madam Chair, perhaps we could just have a quick introduction to see if we need a follow-up agenda item on Wednesday of this.
Okay.
And if I may, I'll say, at our last meeting, I believe it was on October 13, this board responded to some of the misinformation that was out in a segment of the community, I guess it was a Facebook page, about what this board was requesting with respect to runway for our. And we responded to that, but apparently there was a meeting subsequent to that in which this misinformation was again propagated. And there have been concerns raised, not by us, but concerns raised about misleading slides of, of near truths and half-truth information and inaccurate information being communicated. And so the question is, or the question is whether we need to respond to this with either some kind of statement or some kind of meeting ourselves, given that these concerns have been raised. And that's something we could discuss on Wednesday night if we think it merits discussion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zulus. What is the sense of the board? Is that something that we want to take up on Wednesday? This is on our Wednesday evening agenda as well. You see, Ms. Collins nodding. Is anyone else, any objection to deferring this until Wednesday for further discussion? Okay, then hearing none, do we have a motion to adjourn and then the board would attend the special town meeting at seven thirty? All in favor of the motion to adjourn, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, we are now adjourned. Thank you all.